Being recorded and videotaped by the City Council in GCTV-17. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time in accordance with MGL 38 SS 20G. No person shall address the
Recording in progress.
Meeting of the public body without permission of the chair. And all persons shall at the request of the chair be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings at a meeting of the public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Madam Clerk could have a roll call of members. If I pronounce your name wrong, please feel free to correct me. Counselor Goleb?
Here.
Counselor Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Mastrotorio?
Almost. Getting closer.
Say it.
Mastrotaro.
Mastrotaro. Counselor Mastrotara. Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore? Counselor Wondolowski?
Here.
Counselor Healy?
Here.
I skipped over Counselor Bottomley. I'm so sorry.
Here.
Counselor Garrett?
Here.
Counselor Minhaas? Counselor Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Toronto?
Here.
Senior Counselor Ricketts, you have a quorum. Okay. So do you want me to waive this? City Council moved to be ordered that the Greenfield City Council waive the rules of procedure, order, and disposition of business to allow the agenda items to be taken out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Made in second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay. So we'll start with the election of council officers. So can I have a nomination for council president? Counselor Goleb?
I'd like to appoint, I'd like to nominate. I'd like to nominate Counselor Bottomley.
Second.
Second. Okay. It's been made in second. And would you like this?
I'll accept it.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. So would you like to make a statement as brief as you want? I'm kidding.
No, very, very brief. I just want to thank you all. It's going to, a privilege to work the last four years with the counselors, or two years with the counselors that are returning. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you. And I'm new at this, so be patient. I'm sure I'll need help, but I'm really looking forward to it.
Okay. So we need to change chairs.
Don't forget your names tag.
At first, actually, I'd like to thank, I forgot to thank Counselor Ricketts for starting the meeting for us. Thank you. And thank you for your service. I'd like to open up the floor to nominations for vice president. Yeah.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Gilmore.
Do we need, are there any more nominations? Counselor Gilmore, do you accept the nomination?
I'll accept.
I guess we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Congrats, vice president. Oh, opposed? Abstentions. Congrats. Do you have any statement you'd like to make?
Thank you. I look forward to working with everybody. And even the new counselors, there are still some familiar faces, so call me if you have questions. I've been doing it a long time.
So moving to our next agenda item, the orientation with the Clerk's office, that's something that we didn't talk about. We can discuss here about whether we want to have that tonight, or if we want to find another time to schedule that. So I'll open up for discussion if, yes, Counselor Ricketts?
Make a motion to table?
Clerk Scott?
So this is an agenda item that does not need to be tabled. We put it on the agenda to try to be efficient. If it is the will of the council that it not be done tonight, it does not need to be tabled. It can be put on another agenda. If there is going to be a committee chair meeting this month, we could possibly have a council meeting before or after committee chairs for orientation, but it's, it's up to the council, but it does not need to be tabled.
Counselor Goleb?
Are we, are we discussing this now?
Yes.
I would just, I would prefer to do this now. I honestly didn't know until a few minutes before I came and needed to reschedule things with my son for the, for the night, but I, I think that it's, we're all gathered here right now, and perhaps someone will need to leave, but I appreciate, I really appreciate you adding it to the agenda, Kathy, and I think that I'd like to take advantage of the fact that we're all here to do it.
Counselor Healy?
Yeah. If I recall, didn't other counselors do their orientation at City Hall? I don't remember doing it in a meeting before.
This hasn't been done previously in a meeting, and frankly, you never had an orientation.
So you that came in two years ago did not have an orientation.
I went to a thing in Boston.
For the MMA?
Yes.
Yep. So whenever the council decides they want this done, because there will be a quorum of counselors there, we will need to post it at a meeting now, because discussions like that were previously allowed, but now open meeting law requires us to post them as meetings. So that's why we had it on an agenda. But again, the will of the council, whatever the will is, that's
Counselor Gilmore?
I think it would be good if we could do this now, since it has already been posted. We're already here. I feel like I spent more time doing my hair than I spent at the meeting. So time investment, right? I also feel like if there are some really experienced counselors who feel like they already know this inside out and backwards, if they left and we still had a quorum, I'd be happy to stay just to ensure that we have a quorum, because I feel like this is important for the new folks. And I wouldn't mind a refresher.
Counselor Bullock?
I also didn't realize this was tonight, so I do need to step out, but I'm happy to join virtually if there's quorum needs for it. And also attended like a dozen MMA trainings at this point, so.
Counselor Garrett?
I am one of those new counselors, and I think this would be helpful. And we're already here, so the idea of showing up to another meeting when we're already in the room doesn't make a ton of sense, so.
So I'm getting the sense that we should do this, this now. Counselor Wondolowski?
I'm in supportive. I'm just wondering how long an orientation lasts? Because that might help the other counselors who have to leave early.
So this is my first orientation. And really, these are just kind of helpful hints. And the conversation goes from wherever you guys lead it. These are kind of like the basic 101s that make the council office happy. And, you know, we can go from there. If we don't discuss something or touch on something tonight, then we can definitely have a larger conversation. You can send an email with your questions. We can talk on the phone, not necessarily today or tomorrow, but, you know, if you have questions, please ask the questions. And we can just kind of speed demon through this, and then you can launch from there. It's up to you.
Counselor Ricketts?
Okay. So are there some that, when you look at this list, you know that it's really straightforward and you can just say it, and then if there's questions, then we can, or do you want to go down in order? Like, you know, like I see like agenda and email and all that, those might be like just a sentence that you want to tell the new counselors.
Yeah, I think let's just jump into
Do you want me just to jump into this, and we can get it done, and then?
Let's, let's go.
Yes? Okay. So
Scott, it's all yours.
You, you all have a folder in front of you. They have several pieces of information in it. On the left-hand side, it's a, looks like it, if it looks like it came from Channing Albee, when Channing Albee was Channing Albee, it came from Channing Albee. That's how old this is. So it's general information. It's not everything you need to know. You also have a copy of our rules or procedure. So if you have any questions, whether it's in the rules or procedure, charter, ordinance, you can read the rules or procedure there. The next document on the left-hand side is a copy of the current, nothing that has charter amendments that the legislature right now, that they still have not approved, the current charter. On the left-hand side gives you the information on how counselors can request information from the city clerk's office. It gives you, the second document is if you were going to submit an amendment, or a new ordinance, or a resolution, it gives you some suggestions on what you'd like, what you should do before submitting it. In other words, read the charter. Is it already in there? Is it in the rules or regulations? Do we just need to do an amendment, and it's not new? Have you looked at other communities of our size in Massachusetts? Do they have something that you can use rather than recreating the wheel? If it affects a department, have you had a discussion with that department on what your thought is? When you finally get to the point that you want to submit it, it tells you to submit it through email to the council office. And if it's, if the ordinance or whatever that you submit has an enforcement aspect of it, talk to the office that you think is going to enforce it. A lot of times, new ordinances will be done, and the department will say, oh, I didn't know I was supposed to enforce this. Well, it's always good to have conversations. Another document that's in here is a public hearing procedure. So if you are on a subcommittee, and you are the chair, and they are going to have a public hearing, this is a good procedure to follow. It tells you how you want to allow public comment. It gives you a suggestion of timing. It lets you know about how long maybe you should have people discuss, or public comment should be allowed, lets you know that you need an opening time, a closing time. And then it comes down to the council five-day rule. So the council has an internal five-day rule that prior to, five days prior to a meeting, and I'm talking about committee chairs, five days prior to that meeting, we need to have the information, because it does need to go on agenda, it does need to be posted, it does need to have notices sent out to people. So we're giving the office some time to take the action necessary to get the information out to those who need to see it. So that's what's in your folder. It's for yours, you know, for, for you to keep and use as a reference. You'll probably add more information to it as you go along. So going back to the agenda, we have a couple of things that were overlapping. So the first bullet says running a meeting, council and public, council and committee, that could, you could refer back to the public hearing process. That's basically how you run a meeting with the public hearing, but you're still running the meeting. So you heard Counsel Ricketts earlier make a motion to table. Not all items need to be tabled. They can simply be continued without objection to another meeting rather than tabling them. Some items, it's, it's smart to table. Other items, if it's new and the council has never discussed it before, it can be continued to the next meeting without having to table the motion. It's an extra action that we don't need. So we're trying to create efficiencies. Submitting new amendments in your folder, you have the information on how to submit them, and some good ideas to think about prior to submission. So you will be assigned counselor emails. Counselor Wondolowski just got hers last week, maybe? I wanted to let you know that you do want to stop using your personal emails. The reason you want to stop using your personal emails is because that makes it subject to public records. And you don't want to step up to that line. If you use your council emails for your council business, excuse me, those council emails are subject to open meeting law. We can research them through City Hall. We can find the communications that you've had and things that you've sent out. So it takes the burden off of you to provide public records to us, because we can obtain them, as long as you use your council email. One other thing that you'll see and you'll hear, and we'll reiterate it, reiterate it, reiterate it, do not reply to all. So in open meeting law, discussion is any communications between multiple members, which creates a quorum, which then creates a violation of open meeting law. So you not only have to look for a quorum of the council, you also have to look for a quorum of subcommittees. For example, if you five sitting on that side, from Counselor Goleb to Counselor Bullock, were on a subcommittee, and you were debating in email a topic that was going to come before the council, that would be a violation of open meeting law. And we don't like violations. We like to be, step back from the line. So the topic of agenda, agendas that are on here goes along with the five-day rule. Sorry.
I just have a question about email. So the emails that are subject to public record requests are the emails between us and other city officials, correct? It's not between us and community members. Is that accurate, or do you have anything to say?
It is not accurate.
Okay.
All of your emails in your council email is subject
And, and so therefore, the communication that is between us and other counselors, other officials in the community must happen through our council email, but other emails that we write to people who do not have official designations, those are not subject to open meeting law. I've, I've been in conversations with people disagreeing about this, and I think it's just very important for the council to have clarity.
So fictitiously, if Mr. or Mrs. Smith, if you have a conversation with them at the grocery store, and then you'll say, oh yeah, I'll send you that through email. You send them an email, that email is subject to public records, subject to open meeting law, it is discoverable. And if they reply back, and you have a conversation about what's going on with their neighbor's tree, dog, squirrels, whatever, fill in the blank, that's all discoverable under public records law and open meeting law. So if that same conversation was happening between you and the Smiths and other counselors, that is also a violation of open meeting law. So it's all discoverable. So open meeting law and executive session, so open meeting law, I'm sure you've probably heard conversations about how it's becoming quite the enjoyable thing to deal with. Open meeting law is, it's, it's open meeting law. They're, they're there to attempt to keep people, the citizens, informed. This agenda is not about the council. This agenda is about the public. We need to let the public know what is going on. It can be a hindrance, but we, we have to follow it. Yeah. Sorry.
Just as a clarification, I know that there was, you know, a couple of meetings ago, there was a little bit contentious about the response we got from this open meeting law people. Did we not get a further clarification after that that kind of loosened all of that, and almost said, as we were doing it before, was fine? And that, so, i.e., I'm using the example, like, I know that we've more recently had on the agendas, no other topics were
Reasonably considered.
Right, reasonably considered, but that, when we first got the first response, that seemed to be a real shackle on being able to talk about anything that wasn't expected. But I believe we got a follow-up to that, that said, i.e., new business. You can't reasonably anticipate something that might have come up, let's say during a communication that evening, or within the last 48 hours, or whenever it would be. And then we had that whole back and forth about who has to follow what 24 or 48 hour or whatever. And I thought that that was a lot more clear, that the way we've been doing it prior is totally acceptable under open meeting law.
So if it's, there's, there's differences between new business, that's something that is being discussed, and there's new business that requires action. So for both being discussed and requiring action, the recommendation from open meeting law is that if you do it at a meeting that it was not on the agenda, that you should, at the next posted meeting, add it to the agenda, elaborate why it is now on there, and take the action again, so that the citizens can know what's coming up and what action the council is being asked to take. It's not that something new can't be brought up and discussed, it's that to make the public aware of what was brought up and discussed needs to be brought up again, so that people are aware that the discussion is going to happen.
Counselor Garrett has a question?
So I was just thinking about that email example you gave earlier, and I'm not a big reply all guy, just in general myself, but if I wanted to say annoy my fellow counselors and, you know, send a bunch of really great articles on something, say like housing, that's conceivably going to come up in front of the council at some point, but it's not on the next month's agenda, is that verboten as well? Or like, so as far as information being communicated, on, you know, it's like, or let's say there's something more, you know, rezoning districts, you know, there's something that's happened recently, you know, a general topic, a news article. You mentioned lines. Where's the line on that kind of thing?
So oftentimes, it's the reply that makes it the violation. I'm not suggesting that you send an email, she has a question after that. I'm not suggesting that you send an email out to the counselors saying that, this is a really great article about ABC, because we're going to be talking about it in a couple of months, this is important for you to know, and I'm going to vote on this. I'm going to vote yes on this. No, no, no. Please don't. No. Don't, don't announce what your, what your vote is going to be, but oftentimes, it's the reply to that email that can
So it's, so it sounds like it's the deliberations aspect
Exactly.
That's the issue. If you're discussing something that the public needs to see being decided.
Right. If there's a conversation, if there's a deliberation.
But if I'm effectively holding up a billboard saying, this is an article saying this, that's okay somehow, you know, is that fair? Like, by sending that email, I, you know, regardless of what you assume the implication is.
My recommendation is, is don't
Right. No, I probably wasn't going to anyway, but it's just, it's just, it's an interesting, you know, like this whole area of how is our speech as a council used is interesting. You know, so like, I, yeah, I think I understand, but I also, again, trying to be aware of where these lines are.
Counselor Gilmore and then Ricketts?
I just wanted to offer as a point of clarification, the way that we've done it the whole time that I've been on, is if you've got some information that maybe a constituent shares with you, or something you stumble across on your own, or maybe, you know, a town employee who's in an affected department had shared something with you, you can always send it up to the council president and to the clerk's office, and ask them to please share it with the full council. Because once they've had a chance to kind of look at it and make sure there's no debate in the body of the email, then it can be shared around, so that everybody sees it, because we do all want to share information with each other. We just have to make sure that we're not debating and discussing informations in a smoky back room where the public does not have any clue what's going on, and then all of a sudden, we come in and vote on something without any discussion. Yeah.
Counselor Ricketts?
And so the next bullet point is public comment. Not sure why that's on there, but public comment is allowed at meetings. There was, there has been conversation whether it should be put on all subcommittees. That will be up to you all. But open meeting law doesn't require public comment. Open meeting law is for the board, not for the public. So that would be something that you all would discuss to decide whether you wanted that on subcommittees or not. Information requests we've covered, and the five-day rule, and how it works with agendas, we've hit.
Counselor Healy?
Yeah, just going back to the public comment, do not address the public. That's another important part of it. They could talk to you, tell you, but you're not supposed to
Right.
Address them back.
So when we have public comment, exactly, at a council meeting, the public will come up, the chair will determine the length of time that they're allowed to speak. If it's a packed room, they may get a minute, two minutes. Regular meetings, they may get three. We do time them. My annoying timer goes off at the end of three minutes. And Counselor Healy was correct, there's no, that's not a conversation that is time for the public to comment. It's not a conversation between anyone and the person sitting at the chair.
Counselor Minnis?
What is, what is the process of if you want, like, a specific department head to come and explain something? Like, what, how do you do that?
So we haven't had a discussion with the newly elected president. However We haven't had a discussion with the newly elected president. However, in the past, people would request through the council office and the president that this department head or group be invited, but it would come through the president, in the absence of the president, the vice president. So that's generally the process. That's all I got.
Any other questions?
Your council request sheets, if you still have them, we need them before you leave tonight, and new counselors, I do need to get you to stop by. We need you to fill out some paperwork, and I need to give you some information.
Counselor Ricketts?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? We're adjourned at? 6:31 PM.